All right, I'll open the minute, the meeting. And Chikamash, I think you've got a training you've got to go to.
Yeah. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So up to date, 184 emergency incidents in town. And since I last spoke to you, the most significant ones were three searches with the police department. One was for two lost juveniles on Hancock Road that were lost in the woods for about an hour and a half. Two eight-year-old girls, neither finding them. Second one was on West Road with one of the officers. For it was more of a policeman, happy to help there. And the last one was past week on Shaker Road. Somebody was distraught and escaped from the Blue Freedom Academy. So happy to help any time we're called. So the UTV was rolled out all three times. And the family of the Hancock Road one, there was some, you know, parents were two eight-year-old girls who were just out in the woods exploring, they get turned around. And I think that mothers need more medical than children. They brought cookies in the car to the fire station and the police station.
Oh, that was... Was that one of the searches that had the helicopter out over the...
Chief can talk about that, but I know that was one of those, yeah.
Okay, well, when they were found sick, good.
Yeah. Tom Fireworks, running mental, we got a great worker relationship with Rob Jacobs on JPI. He does a great job. And whatever we need, whatever we request, he doesn't even complain. He even feeds our crew when we're off here for the day. By state law, we have to be posted as soon as the trailer rolls in. And that's at 3:00 in the afternoon. And fireworks don't go off at night 30. So it's kind of a long afternoon for the crew that's out there being posted for that trailer. So we've got a good working relationship with them. So hopefully we can continue that through town. Canterbury Fair this weekend, we're gonna have E and P posted for the road race. I'm gonna have somebody down here with UTV. And we'll have a presence for at least the morning, early afternoon with the Canterbury Fair. And kind of quick rest, we'll be up there hosting the annuals for the races as well.
Great.
We, as you know, as I said last month, we're down on numbers a little bit. So I put over the blog in the newsletter about recruitment drives. So new people have come to the door yet, but we're still in good shape. But you know, I like to get some more people into the door. So just keep that in your mind if somebody's asking you to begin with a question or something like that.
Is there age requirement? I mean, I know it has to be over 18, but is there old age requirement? Are the old age cut off?
We got a job for everyone.
Okay. How many people have asked who might feel a little bit when we call law and two? But...
That's okay, I'm talking.
All right, will do.
Yeah. And then the last heading, Pickard Road to Hyattman. I expected that to be done by now, but we run into problems with Department of Fire and消防 Services. They can become us a deal with, so we're navigating through that. We'll get to that. Instead of reporting, the new platform rolling out in fall of 2024, I'm working on that. So right around the turn of this calendar year, the Department of Safety in the state, through E 911 is a division of Department of Safety Emergency 911. They handle dispatch and handle all that stuff. Basic communications obviously. They enlisted with a new vendor that basically have a product where somebody in town, and whether every town takes advantage of it is a different story. But you can take the emergency manager in town, police chief, fire chief, whoever that is, or both. And we can log onto a program on our computer or our phone, and we get sent out an emergency notice. You ever get the notices on your phone you didn't subscribe to? It's kind of like Flashlight or whatever type of deal. Well, that can come from us if we take advantage of it. There's zero cost of the town. Some hoops we have to jump through, I just submitted the paperwork today. Justin, Chief Pardey, and I, we talked, you know, because not only town takes advantage of it, it's not mandated to it, but we both thought that it would be a good idea, whether it's Joe Bad Guy running around, or say extended power outage, or an imminent, you know, imminent tornado threat, we're getting, we can set something out where every cell phone in the Canterbury area by paying can get that notice.
And it's just...
It override the soundings, override everything.
And it's just Canterbury or the Canterbury area?
Well, we're managing Canterbury, so just Canterbury, basically anybody who's in Canterbury.
And do you have to subscribe, or do we just get...
We have to subscribe, we have to...
I mean, do, like, do I have to subscribe?
No, 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 not at all. Remember Naxle? I don't know if you remember, N-A-X-L-E used to be at that. But you're gonna subscribe to that. And it said you text like, hey, this road is closed, it's an accident. It's not that level, no. This is, this is something that probably be used pretty infrequently every year. Or it's not, it's not like the weather channel, hey, somebody has a problem. So we're not sending that out.
Right.
If there's a tornado that's basically crossing Boston, coming to Canterbury, and I'm aware of it, we're gonna send something out.
Okay.
And, you know, and all the chief fires people, and he's ready to look. But hopefully we never need it, but we have that capability now. And knowing from my perspective, if we're ever gonna send out a notice like that, Ken will be consulted and you'll be notified.
Okay.
Basically, you know, all of that time, that's gonna be sent out.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
And that was, you know, after looking at a couple of weeks ago, the Texas flood, that disaster down there and the response and all that stuff. And so I was already working on this, I had already talked to Chief Pardey about this, and we both agreed that we're gonna move forward with it before this lack of notification with Texas came out. So, you know, that just kind of brings everything to the forefront a little bit, the magnificence and importance of it. We, this resident in town that, that we determined doesn't have smoke or CO detectors, they have no money to install them, I hooked up with Red Cross, Red Cross is a program where they will come to a community and install for no charge, smoke detectors, CO detectors. So that's rolling, we got that going on right now with someone, a resident of the town. Thankful that they reached out, actually I believe Sam reached out to us, saying, sorry, what's the way of the situation? We hooked them up with Red Cross and...
You had a thing in the newsletter back in the spring about that program. Is it worthwhile to just run a little thing again at some point, say that program's available if you don't have...
Maybe when, maybe when the heating season starts, it's probably a good idea, a good reminder. I hooked up, I have future training in the next month with the people that are on the National Gas Line at Shaker Road for emergency contacts and training, you know, whenever we can break to the table, if there's something, if that line were to rupture or something like that. So looking forward to that. Last month, I went through training with the Antra Division of Children, Youth, and Family on notifications if we were to see something, and if we see something, what happens and all that stuff. Bringing that training to our members in October. That's just another way of type of training, knowing that if you see something, say something. Working with the Speedway also, the event this year is that weekend, September 19th to the 21st. We'll be staffing with a crew of five trucks and a crew of three each day. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So leave our common with one engine, but we come into the past, it's been the worst. And we'll continue with the long-term beaches that are giving a lot of views, a lot of views. They're very, very, very busy on the long beach, I mean, you know, 30 people.
Oh, nice.
And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
That's a lot, wouldn't mean that's all, that's a very full plate, thank you, Chief.
I'll sit. Chief Pardey, it's a natural segue.
All right. Since June 15th, we've had 16 incidents, eight arrests, two accidents, 119 citations, and 516 for most service. And 20 hours of time. We've got the fair coming up this week, and all four of us will be there during the day. And then Jordan will be on at Nighttime Fireworks. We got training coming up on Sunday, we'll all be on Sunday as well. And that's all I got for the past month.
Can I ask one quick question? Is 516 cost of the month high, or...
This time of year, average.
Okay, thanks.
Second page. So I don't know if you all know, we've gotten zero applicants. I have had two conversations with people that I know that were willing to come here for a pay cut. Unfortunately, the pay cut I was getting was a lot more than they were willing to pay. This is something that we looked at, I think, two or three years ago. I don't remember, me and Phil Brinkett.
Yeah.
I just never really got into it. It's a living pay scale, so it moves up with cost of living every year. That way, there's no falling behind. Dunbarton uses this, and Dunbarton seals people from Gosham and other bigger agencies because they never fall behind. It's just something that I'm looking to put into place next year. Start out, steps are the steps that I'm gonna be using. I have to explain those. The one that Dunbarton uses, it makes it out to 10 years. I've stretched it to 15 years, because I think maxing out to 10 years is optically. Right now, we would have a patrolman in step one, and then starting position. The step three gives me, I guess we'll call it wheelroom, for if I hire a new officer or hire somebody with experience, gives me something to offer, where if I start with step one, I can only hire somebody that's new.
Oh, okay.
As far as the budget's concerned, I have no plans of raising anything else in my budget next year, except the things I don't have any control over. Anyway, raise my overall money at 6%. Be able to do this.
Be able to do this.
And this will be the only large increase, because the next couple of years, it would just be the cost of bills. Get that on the radar, get your insight on it in the future.
It won't be long, it'll be budget time, so...
Right, and that's why I wanted to get it out there. And I wanted you guys to look at it, you know, get your thoughts on it. Another thing I want to talk about is possibly giving the aunt 36 hours a week to make it full-time, because she's not gonna stay part-time forever and try to replace half of it, she's not...
How many hours a week is she working?
She works 30 now.
For no benefits?
You know, well, right now, she doesn't have that.
Yeah, I would assume that's...
Yeah, except for someone her age, she's not gonna be part-time forever.
And you want to raise her to how many hours?
36.
36.
I think 36 is what she needs to be full-time. And I have the work to give her, but we also include fire department, highway, all three. So I've already talked to John and Chief Kamash, and then fun stuff, answer phones and all there.
Yeah.
Need some of that, give them that up there as well. Something to think about.
Yeah. And what are you thinking for her with, you know, is everything the same time?
She's not included in this, but if we can do it in 2026, great. We'd have to figure out, obviously, paying her and stuff like that.
Interesting, yeah.
Figure that's a six-hour, six more hours than she's already getting, and then whatever the benefits are, I don't know that those includes money-wise, but that's something you can just look at.
Yeah.
Well, we're looking at, especially if there's work to be done that isn't getting done in the, you know, fire and highway departments.
Well, there's work getting done, she's, I'm doing it, or John's doing it, or Chief Kamash is doing it. It would just free us up more.
Right, so that would be, that would be good. Okay.
What we learned our lesson in the dead life, trying to train Jane, a lot of us, we didn't have the job, and then when Jane left, trying to train her, not an easy position to train for, with the whole 91A and everything that you need to learn. But I know she had to go to, to try to replace you, it's not an easy task. I know some departments already talked to her, so I'm trying to, trying to get ahead of that.
Are you trying to poach our people, come on?
Partners do, she's part of the group with all the administrators, and they email each other all the time, so...
Poaching is the thing.
It is, it is.
So you'll bring this all, are we covered enough with the people that we have until this comes up in budget season?
Covered enough.
With the, with the people that you have, you haven't had any new applicants, but with...
I mean, I'm still one officer short.
Okay.
By raising this, I'm hoping I can get people to come here. The things that we were offering before, you know, taking cars and torn on three off, all the other agencies are now doing that as well. So we don't have that. We had that before, that's how we got Officer Weskey, Officer Pardey. So all the others, agents are doing the same thing, they just pay a little bit more now. So that's where we're stuck at. Because I'm glad we just got four applicants right now. Just talking to him today. Any questions?
Thank you for providing this well ahead of time.
You know, I'll probably have more after I actually read this and digest it, but thank you.
Yeah, the actual percentage goes up to 6.35%.
Oh, 6.3?
Yeah, 6.35. But again, not gonna raise any other line except the ones that I have no control over. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Sam, you wanna...
Oh, wait, I forgot, we have one of these. Oh, no, I lied.
Receivables are as usual. We sent out reminder letters because they're basically three weeks from the due date, so at least hope to all receive reminder letters as we have to fill for the due. Nobody, nobody is jumping out at me except for second page, middle of the page is Brendan Zalas. So we have a small bill, but nobody's contacted us because Zalas has died. That one's one to look at. Only other one to start thinking about is put on the radar, loving property.
I just saw it, showed up a couple of times.
Yeah. Nobody has made any attempts to get it, no, at all. It's better to have a plan when we go into the leaning process this spring, into the deeding process early summer, rather than wait until, yeah, we hit that. So... Any questions, any clarifications should get ironed out way before we do that.
And that, the deeding, the guy comes up, you said spring?
Next spring. First week of August is certification, and then we got September, October tax collector in town for conference this year.
Is, is the rest of the, of everything seen pretty much within the normal?
Yeah, there's other people that haven't paid that I've seen, so they're here, so now they're gonna get a second letter and... Somebody came in today and said we went to a wrong email address, or went to somebody else's email address that shouldn't have.
Okay.
So, type of thing. Or he was certain that it was gonna be a paper bill, it never came, so...
Had that happen. What's the, what's the new date when it's red lights start going off if somebody hasn't paid?
Oh, March, yeah, it's gonna be March. Because if we don't do anything until after that second bill, it's well due.
Okay.
So it'll be after December 1st.
Thanks, Sam.
One question, Sam, got an email from NHMA on the veto update. SB 213, electioneering by public employees. Do you know their, NHMA is encouraging all employees, municipal employees, to send a note to the governor? And if the selectman or anybody on the town officials want to send anything, they have emails. Have you, you know, the Town Clerks Association done anything?
I haven't heard anything from them, because NHMA...
I'll forward this email around, has all things.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if everybody wants to do it, or if you want to do it as...
I definitely do, yeah, and I think we should consider...
I agree. It, it seems like it would be, could be a dangerous bill that could affect all of us. I mean, just for offering information on a warrant article or anything like that, potentially there could be a problem with that. So I think, I think it'd be good for all of us.
Is there a timeframe for us to weigh in on?
It doesn't, it's one of the bills that's waiting to be signed, passed, and they're asking the governor to veto it. So I think as soon as possible, we'll be providing it.
Should we decide on that tonight, that soon?
Yeah, I think so.
I, I think, I would encourage it, because, because we have people ask us all the time, like I say, something as simple as a warrant article, if we give information, and it could be construed as electioneering, so...
I sent a long email to her, except if she wanted to use it as a template for...
Sure, sure.
If you want to read what I sent, you could see it.
Why don't we do this, why don't we get to our department head reports?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back to that after.
Okay.
Because the sooner the better, then you can...
I'm sure Mrs. Baker has better places to be, so is Sam.
Never.
John, maybe.
Not much.
Thank you. Thanks, Sam, appreciate your time. Mrs. Baker?
May I?
Big call.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
We are in the last week of summer reading, which I know everyone's in a tigger about the fair, but we do that just about every week. In fact, June, July, we did 22 programs on and off-site. So we're having, we're experiencing huge numbers. We cannot be more excited about that. Our participation brings in families from all over the area, so I'm feeling really good about that. And again, we have cleaned up the use of the town hall and collaborating with the fair. Bay State folks, I've arranged for them to come the Monday after the fair. Rick Crawford says that he will get some volunteers to clean out the town hall. So that should probably be done by the end of day Monday, so...
So Bay State folks will come take up all the leftovers?
Yeah, I've had them come the last five years, and they take all the remainers. And then the tables get moved away, and then we'll be able to clean it, or someone will be able to clean it. But yeah, they've done it in the past. Customarily, back in the day, there used to be a market for used books, and there, there isn't anymore. So Bay State folks comes and read, just get them stuff. So it's a fucking dirty way of getting the town hall emptied. Speaking of collaboration, Big Truck Day was a huge success, 135 people in attendance. So thank you notes are going out to highway, fire, police, area businesses. It was a huge success. It's a wonderful time that a lot of families are able to thank, especially the highway guys who are unseen, and it's a real positive time, because it's probably, you don't get a ton of positive feedback, John. But they certainly do on Big Truck Day. So I really, I really love that event. And again, 130 kids, a lot of, a lot of kids certainly do. My trustees are not meeting in July because of the fair. They all, they all encompassing fair. They will meet again in August. And August is a time where we try to take our vacation time. I have enough, Cal can tell you I have enough vacation, I can never work again. So that's, that's something on me, like I need to make sure that I am taking my paid time off and my staff are, we've just been so short-staffed, been so busy, it's just very hard for us to do that. So we're gonna concentrate on doing that, just to be, you know, fair to our staff. But we, we are busy. On a side note, important help, but notice, we're talking about Senate bill and House bill. I am also the president of the New York Library Association, and we have written a letter. It's enrolled currently with the governor, which just means it's just kind of sitting there on our desk, because electioneering certainly would affect libraries. So luckily, we had a great breakthrough on House bill through 2014, and that was a detailed letter that we had, had issued, and the governor did not pass it into law. So that was booked in through school libraries, which did not have to do with public libraries, but that's a harbinger of things to come, which involves the mandated collection. And I'm meeting with the governor in August to talk about some major library system. So all that, in a...
Go tell him he's got it.
So other than that, we're just busy collaborating with our good farmers market partners, the Canterbury Country Store. Just really, really enjoying the collaboration that we see each and every day. Of course, what happens is not everyone can attend all of our special wonderful events, because there's too many to go around, but it's also a couple of the time to do this, so... I just met with Ken in fact about a heating grant, and I have to tell you, I have not gotten the real numbers back from the heating supplier, because I think they're kind of busy installing geothermal for cooling. So once summer reading is, is wrapped up, I'll be able to concentrate more on facilities. So that is all.
But you're nice and cool.
We're always cool, and it's not like us. One thing that building does is it keeps us warm.
Well, it's weatherized.
And now it's weatherized, it's very nice.
Lovely. Great.
Any questions, or...
No, thank you, how about thank you?
Thank you.
Yeah, Big Truck Day was great, I had a great time.
That was it, it's, it's our favorite, it really is.
And you get to see the fish hatchling. Everybody has kids in law.
I know, and he was very informative, too.
Yeah.
Yes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You're up, sir. We had a change of work, a little bit on our to-do list, did a little paving up on Mountain View. Guys got a little training on that, and how hot it is. And also how to roadside change a tire that they blew on the way. Little line striping in all the yards, graded a few roads. And we're working on prepping for paving, as you saw on Hucklebilly. Roadside mowing started today, again, as you saw on Hucklebilly. And Biden's done a nice job covering at the dump for vacations, and we got one more week to get through. Haul some glass out of there, again, another roadside training on tire change. All aluminum out of there, about $3,900 on that. So worked out pretty good. Any questions for me?
Well, we've got John.
Talk about...
Yeah.
Lots, yeah. I did meet with John today and showed him the email from Mr. Brasky. John agrees he can get the pavement taken up. But really, the big concern is making sure we don't hit that septic line.
That's up.
So that's, that's really a big concern. I will contact Mr. Brasky and respond to his email, and let him know that that will be happening. And so we'll go from there, I'm sure that'll take care of it.
If you can pop, can you reuse that pavement, the parts that you popped up?
I'm just gonna break it out. Grade it out.
Yeah.
They could haul it up to Ezro, and they can replane it in when they, when they do the replanning up there. That's what we do with a lot of our pavement, that over-paved and only has some.
Whatever works. Thank you. That sounds like a good plan for that whole section.
It does, yeah, I think that's a good solution. All right, thanks, John.
Yeah, you got Greg for show meeting.
Oh, good, yeah, okay.
That's old business, I mean, if you want to take it out.
Greg, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Now we can hear you, too.
Yeah, welcome, we're gonna take things out of order and talk about show meeting house now. We're going to take things out of order and talk about Shell Meeting House now. There he is.
You guys saw the email that I sent you from the attorney?
Yes.
So the attorney's position is that at least Shell Meeting House is a discontinued road. Greg gave us the letter. We looked at everything, sent it to the attorney. They came back and said they, looking at the laws that were in place in 1928, that that road did not require the bodies to be notified. So that road would be discontinued. I think with that opinion from the attorney, the staff at the town office can go through the list of those discontinued roads and look at the dates and look at the dates that the attorney provided. And try and come up with hopefully a solution for several of the other roads. We'll bring them up to you and let you know and bring up the evidence that we found and go that way.
Sounds good. Tim, or Greg, when Tim was here, he had asked that we send a letter sort of affirming what our findings and decision were. So we'll get a letter out to you just affirming that it's a discontinued road.
Right. What Ken just stated would be perfect, that would be useful. I mean, to us, it feels like Groundhog Day, actually.
Yeah.
The, but you know, looking back on it, I think to the Wayne Mandays and the Jim Bassett action to file with the Registry of Deeds. I think he was trying to put, to solidify a starting point for everybody. It's like, this is what it is now. And so if anybody wants to make a change, they've got to go through the process to make a change. Because how many times does this come up? And how much time do you guys spend dealing with this? It would be great for everybody to have it resolved in some kind of permanent way.
Agreed. All right. And we'll send a letter to their complaint as well.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. Greg, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's fine. Actually, Eric, I don't want to go down too much of a rabbit hole. But there, I think we've talked before about what's the road dossier issue. Because I mean, I was in the state archives and actually I chatted with Calvin a little bit about his research in the state archives. And there's, there's a lot there. But what I was not finding was about the actual formation of the roads. And how, and the required, the legal requirements for forming a road are even more restrictive than that of those for discontinuing a road. For example, Shell Meeting House road was built in order to provide access for the Hills Corner, the uplands, Canterbury, East Canterbury people to this new church being built at the center of town. At a time when the church was the major social cohesion of a town in New England. And then they started building the church and a storm came up and blew the building down. And they decided that God said that there shouldn't be a church there. And so maybe did God say they shouldn't finish the paperwork for forming the road? It's, you know, it gets, it gets really complicated as you dig back into it.
I'll bet.
Anyhow, thank you for addressing it. Good luck with the, the, there are two other roads that I, I, in my research, I would have some concern about. And that would be Ames Road and Bean Hill Road, which are both discontinued, but the discontinuance crosses town lines. And so with the lack of proof of court notification, perhaps those roads are subject to challenge of the discontinuance. But that's a, it's a lot of interesting research, but it's very time-consuming too. All right. Again, thanks.
Thanks, Greg. Good night.
Thank you, Greg.
Good night.
Which dates would we be looking at from that email? The 28th, as we said, like.
I'll have to go back through the email. A lot of dates, or I'll let you guys know and give us the roads that we've got to review and see which ones might, might be affecting on us.
Yeah, so like I go with Greg said about the layout of the roads.
Yeah. Yeah, this whole map, we don't have, we have no information at all at the town office. How any of those are laid out?
I have a bunch of documentation I got from Web with, I don't know if they're the original layout maps of town, but they're literally squiggles with descriptions. And you have to try to overlay them over a scale map to determine what road, what year, what it was. Because they weren't all called the modern names.
Right, Joe. Right.
And whether or not.
And the scale was probably all white.
No, they, they did a good job.
Oh, good.
Trying to determine whether I laid out a road so I could go get to Ken's farm or if the town adopted the road and who paid who to put the road in. It's very tricky to determine who did what and where. And whether or not it's a town road or it's.
Right.
That's a nightmare.
The official map is in Sam's office, I know, right?
There is one in Manny's office and in Sam's office.
The one that's above Brian's head there is that.
It was one of the official maps. I don't know if it's been updated or not.
Okay, got it. And I think, you know, as we go down this road again.
We can.
Yeah.
You make sure all the maps.
Talk about making sure all the maps are updated.
Yeah, because we just had somebody, by the way, Tim. Danny, when they came in, was looking at that map and there it is.
But, yeah. So. I think this one was put out in 23 by Central Manhattan Plan.
Brian, did you see a date on that one? Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. It seems like it's a different.
Yeah, it was one that came out in 91, the original road approach. And then I think this one came out in 23.
99.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. That would be the only suggestion I would have is, you know, when we're, when we're done.
Yes.
We'll make sure everything matches.
And if we get it done by the Christentile, we can sell them too.
Does, is there a certain, to try to save time, I've got a lot of documentation. Is there like any keywords or certain things that the attorney said, this is all we need? No.
Tried.
Tried.
I wish.
You're right.
Yep. All right.
So my final question on that would be, since it's, we're going to say yes, it's discontinued. And when they were here, Dan talked about putting perhaps another gate down the other end because of traffic. So that's not an issue, correct?
That's, the other property owners, if they want to put a gate up, that's up there. If they don't want to, they don't have to.
Good.
And I asked Ken this too, I'll just bring it up because we're here. If we do affirm these roads are discontinued, which it sounds like they might be, do we have any responsibility as a town to notify the landowners on there in regards to their deeds? Because some deeds might not echo the discontinuance. Because when they're discontinued, the property goes to the center of the road.
Right.
And I don't know if that puts us in a position where somebody goes to resell it or not. Where, what's our responsibility just to send the landowners, hey, you're discontinued? We just want to reaffirm this. We want your paperwork to clean it up. And this is what we found. Here's an F Y I. Are you sticking it in your tax card? Or do we just, what's the responsible thing to do? And is there any liability if we don't?
That's a good point, because then we could be sitting here having this discussion or somebody else will be having this discussion again in 10 years about a piece of a road that we just thought we settled. It's not a bad idea.
Hello, hello.
Yeah.
Hello. Sorry. That's an interesting point Calvin brought up there. Because it depends on how the road was originally formed. This is my understanding. You know, if it was a King's Grant road, then it does not go back to the center of the, the boundaries. Don't go back to the center of the road. And there are other ways roads are formed where the land is actually acquired by the town. And so then it's, it doesn't go back to the owner. And that's in those situations. It's a complicated situation.
No, no one answer that fits all the roads.
Most, most, and also state law says you can't address roads as a group. They have to be addressed individually. Each road has to be addressed individually is my, again, my understanding.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense. Case by case basis, really.
Yeah, most of the town roads were laid out as right-of-way. However, like Greg said, there's the King's Grant ones. There are other methods that the town used. So it would be really a case by case basis.
But in total, how many roads are we actually talking about that we would have to decide?
Seven.
Oh. That sounds more dual.
Yeah, they're not, I mean, Wyden Road is a private road.
Yeah.
Ames Road is discontinued, crosses town lines. So that's two. And then you've got.
Bean Hill.
Bean Hill, which crosses town lines. So that's three. That leaves you Shaw, Sunset Hill. Shell Meeting House is discontinued. Soares Ferry. And Merrill Road, which is up at the orchard and it's 200-foot trail. So it's really only three or four that would be.
Oh, that sounds doable. All right. Have a good time with that.
I've got most, I think I have most of it. I just don't know what they need exactly. I don't want to give them the wrong paperwork.
Good. All right.
Word follow-up, sure. John, thank you. All right. Uh, it's, we still got some time to move. Do you want to do some signing?
Yep.
Why don't we start with an accounts payable manifest in the amount of $52,471.35.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Yep, $52,471.35.
All right, so.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye. Not that I don't trust you, Calvin. I always go back and check what I've written down versus what shows up in the minutes. And you're spot on every time.
That's because I do it before the meeting.
I know.
She's got the magic. Really efficient, super organized.
Sure.
Never get anything wrong.
Well.
All right, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of $53,818.43.
Oh, some moved.
And second, all those in favor.
Aye. Calvin, you moving your next one?
Try to stay on it.
I know. It's not happening. One little move.
Thank you. All right, then last is a welfare manifest in the amount of $1,644.68.
That's right.
All right, I'll move it. Second, all those in favor.
Aye. Hey, are seeing what's that sound like?
I got a record.
You do have a record.
All right.
It's the last time we'll do it tonight.
All right, why don't we move on to previous minutes approval? And we'll look first at the public minutes from the July 7 meeting.
So we've got four suggested changes on page 30, on line 111. Adding to that sentence, they will review and decide the next week.
Okay, yeah. That seems accurate.
And then line 116, inserting in 2014, just to clarify when exactly that happened. Then on page 5, inserting between 199 and 200, the select were decided not to pursue this. Just to rattle up that conversation a little more clearly.
Okay.
And then on page 6, on line 274, adding at the end, at the Canterbury Elementary School during after-school pickup. Just to clarify what the traffic problem is. And the rest of it's papers and grammar.
Yep. All right, so I'll move the minutes as amended.
I will second that.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All right, that takes care of that. Why don't we move on to the non-public, also from July 7.
All right, I'm sorry to read these yet.
I'm going to cut out it all, so you guys can read this. Have a great night.
Good night, Brian. We're still broadcasting, so.
Oh, okay.
Have a great night.
See you.
Yeah, I took some looking at that.
That the one beginning at line 83?
Line 88.
Just read that. I'll see it. It's extremely appropriate.
Sorry, now I have to back up and read, but I skipped it.
Calvin, do you think it? Good. I'll move the minutes then.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye. Put my, put my okay on it.
All right. All right, we've still got 15 minutes before Luke gets here. You want to talk about the letter, yeah.
Sure, yeah. Is that in your folder?
No, I didn't believe we were going to talk about this. I just, and he wrote this and I.
Oh, no, this is the Peter Shepherd letter.
Oh, Peter Shepherd letter.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about the donor.
No.
Peter Shepherd letter is in New England. Peter Shepherd is often off through town with his very large drove. Peter Shepherd is often walks through town with his very large German Shepherd. If you've ever seen him walk on Hackleboro. No, he doesn't have a back. He's a very tall man, white hair, and he has a very large German Shepherd named Billy the Kid. Often walking straight there down.
How does he get those?
But we don't have the, a copy of the.
The one copy?
Yeah, I'll, so is that a, I should read it in my phone, huh?
You can, oh, is it, when did we get it? Oh, I'll just.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen him many times, uh, walking.
Uh, you saw it, Cal?
Yeah.
Okay, um. What's the downside of doing it?
So, as I said in my mail to guys on the details on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Kimball Pond Road, Center Road, Baptist Road, all state main game roads.
Oh, yeah.
The town has no authority to set the speed limit, all those state main game roads, it's the state. Um, in a little road in the center, but we have the ability with the Apple Road. We tried to get the state to lower the speed limit on Kimball Pond Road a few years ago. We had the state reps, we had representatives from the state highway department here. And the selectmen made the pitch to lower the speed limit. And the state said, unless you have some kind of data that shows accidents or you catch people speeding, that, that it's a problem, then they didn't feel almost needed to lower the speed limit. Police department had a recording device and measured the speed on Kimball Pond Road. And it was a small percentage of the cars traveling that road that, that went above the speed limit, posted speed limit. In fact, most of them went below the posted speed limit. And so the state felt that they were not going to rather use the speed limit. So, I mean, you can talk to the state. We could have Mr. Shepherd write a letter similar to this to the state reps and the DOT. But as a town, we don't have the authority to use.
And how, the curious part of it too is I think a lot of people don't necessarily look at the speed limit when they're traveling on those roads. They kind of go what, what's a comfortable speed?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Kimball Pond is currently.
Forty.
Forty.
Turns to thirty right after the road.
Right, yeah, coming down.
Yeah.
So if you reduced it another ten miles an hour on that one section or twenty miles, how, how would we know if people were actually doing that?
We would ask the police pirates.
Sit there for a while.
Either take radar there for a while or, um, as before, uh, the police pirate had borrowed a recording device. But they just, it's a black box and hangs on a utility pole.
Yep.
Oh, it's not the little thing that goes across the road?
Nope, 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 it's a, it's a radar units, it's almost little black blocks. It's a, that's attached to a utility pole with some band clamps and they use it. And then download the data and it tells them time of day, speed. Um, it does, it's not a camera, it's just reports the car, how fast they're going. They had borrowed that and put it on Shaker Road and put it on a couple of the roads that we're having some problems with. And found some spots where the police, uh, increased their enforcement.
So is Old Tilton a state?
Old Tilton is not a state, that's a town. So you could do something in Tilton. They have, the Apple Roads posted thirty. Posted the third.
Yeah, but have you?
Oh, I do twenty-seven, right? They have a lot of traffic behind me.
If you, if you sit in, in, um, what, Hausa, further up the road and you hear the traffic coming by, they come, they, they do.
Yeah, depending on where you want to, like on Hackleboro Road, if you want the center that, um, further up the hill, somewhere, reduce it there. Say if they will tip, maybe down the corner or something, I don't know. It's like, up to you guys where you can help, you wanted to reduce it. The Apple Road's tight by the Orchard.
Well, it's tight, but a lot, and a lot of people actually walk and ride their bikes on it. But a lot of people pick up speed going to get up that hill, up to pass the facets. So, and it gets tight, that's where we lost, a couple of months ago, somebody went around the corner and went over the.
Oh, yeah.
So those two roads have a lot of walkers. Um, they do have fast traffic. Uh, there's something we could do about those two roads.
Well, how come they haven't, and I don't know the rules for this, but like where, uh, Hackleboro turns to Sunset Hill, there's a paved patch there. And that hasn't really been, there's possible now people fly through that coming up the hill, it's not really. That was paved because there was multiple washouts there several years ago. So they paved that section.
Really big washouts, yeah.
Um, yeah, so fairly, fairly significant washouts. So they paved that which approved it a lot. You know, as far as the speed, I don't know, you know, we'd have to talk to. Have the police. It just gets really narrow there, people are flying up. And you can have the police, we can ask the police to do enforcement places and field issues.
Would it, would it be worth it to see if we could, um, borrow the box again and actually check the speeds on both, the two roads that we have any control over?
Yeah.
Morrow and, and Washington?
Yeah.
And, and let Peter know that we're doing that?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Hello? Just let me add the, uh, uh, Central Regional Planning Commission, uh, of trafficking. It's kind of east. Many of the, uh, stuff, I, recording sites include speed. The new technology includes speed, uh, and so you could get caught up.
Okay, you were, you were broken up, Greg, I, I think you said several regional.
I'm sorry, uh, yeah, my internet is iffy here, uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, uh, the New Hampshire Municipal Association Speed Studies that we, uh, do every year.
Yep.
On multiple locations. Many of those locations are now also showing speed because the new, the new recording devices show speed.
Okay, understood.
So it would give you more information without having to set up new, uh, new testing.
Okay, makes sense, thanks, Greg.
I was actually gonna ask about that because we designated the roads that we wanted to check this year. But did we have only a certain number that we could, five? So I don't think the two roads that we're talking about were part of that.
Yeah, I don't think so, I'll, I'll look at the list and see, but, yeah, but, uh.
Maybe we could add two more, that would be great, but.
Yep, yep.
Um, if they're already out and doing it, why, why were we limited to five or is that just what the budget was?
That's what they, it's every year they all eliminate the five.
Yeah.
I suppose it never hurts to ask, but.
If you don't ask, you don't get.
Right.
So we, we've had a complaint and we would like to check and before we, you know, go through the blah, blah, blah.
Okay, okay, yep.
Thank you. I'll draft a letter if you like. I don't want to have tear to do left. And then, um, should we, um, how should we answer Mr. Shepherd at the, just, um, you know, we're working on those and, and everything you just told us, the state wasn't interested, this is what you could do and this is what we're, we're going to do?
I would answer, just say that, uh, Kimball Pond Road, Baptist and Center are state, state controlled.
Yeah.
So we don't have any input on that. He can contact state reps or DOT if he wants.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll look into at least Old Tilton Road out there.
Okay, that would, I think that would be good then, that everybody's got a little something to do.
Yeah.
Certainly sympathetic to anybody that's walked up.
Yep.
Some of these roads.
Oh, Hackleboro's crazy, take your life in your hands.
Kimball Pond without shoulders is.
Draft twenty-seven.
Alright. Anything further on that?
Uh, I don't think so, thank you.
Alright, Luke, welcome.
Hi.
Why don't you have a seat?
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Yeah. I brought some, I didn't know how many people were carrying, I brought some. Highlighters, I wanna.
Give me four, you can have a friend.
Just about rail trails in general.
Okay, Luke.
I, I, one for speaking, I wanted to give you this too. Talk, when we talk about footbridge, I'll take a talk about that. Great. And then this is just if anyone is really passionate about it, it's like more information.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, so we live down there on, uh, the West Road, Canterbury, and on the other side of tracks. And, um, the bridge got taken down, I don't know, was it ten years ago or something? It used to be a car bridge across.
Ten years ago, yeah.
Okay. And, um, it made sense, it was decrepit and, uh, I'm not sure exactly the reasons it was taken down as opposed to repaired. I think it had to do with, it was, it needs to be a bu- budget pass on both, both towns. Anyway, it's neither here nor there, um, the river's there and, uh, there's people that still use it. Um, there's a park on the other side of the river and there's a, a developing rail trail on the other side of the river. Which, um, currently, I think it runs from approximately the Park Road at Exit Seventeen up to Lebanon. And I think there's plans within the next few years to go down into Concord from, from that location. And, um, I just thought it would be great for Canterbury to tie into the rail trail for people, um, that cycle or walk, um, to not have to go down to Exit Seventeen, um, and, and cross the bridge, which is gonna be dangerous. And could tie into this like, I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly, but sixty miles I would guess and, and, and go right into, you know, downtown Concord and have the availability to shop or cultural or restaurants and, um, to not have to drive a car everywhere. I think there, uh, so in many communities, I mean, of course, more so in like vacation areas. Um, but in many communities, the rail trail does provide, um, for economic growth. There, there is an economic factor to improving, um, access to, to rail trails for businesses. Camping, like I, I think of Cape Cod, it's hard to compare, you know, central New Hampshire to Cape Cod. You know, there's cafes and ice cream parlors and, and, um, fed breakfasts that have developed all up and down along, um, rail trails throughout the country, and I think it's a, you know, it's still a growing movement. I, there was money, um, with the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act for, for rail trails. I'm assuming that that's reduced, if not abolished, um, completely. But, um, anyway, I just thought to start the conversation and throw my hat in the ring if somebody supports it and to try to find out how I can push it forward or just continue to explore it. I did call Boscombe, that they happen to be developing on the other side of the, um.
Yeah, river. That's what this is.
Okay, yeah, kind of sent me that, and the pavilion, they have parks there, they already have like basketball courts, well, there's tennis courts, baseball fields, um, they're looking to expand pavilion with, uh, railing access. So like, on that end, and I don't, I don't know if Boscombe has like beaches per se on their side of the river. I, I really don't know, but I'm.
They don't.
They don't, right? So like, it could be like a real mutual beneficial, um, of course, you know, we're down there, so we would benefit, but also it would be a detriment to us, you know, it would be kind of both, like we're, we're on the end of a dead end road, so like, it's quiet and that's nice. But at the same time, um, I, I wouldn't want, honestly, I think a car bridge would be difficult for us, the way we, we kind of manage the farm and, and stuff. But I think footbridge could be a, a benefit for, for everybody, so.
A foot, foot and bike bridge.
A foot and bike bridge, yeah, yeah. And then, so I spend, whenever I get free time, I do go up to the White Mountains and, you know, it just seems like they throw up these relatively inexpensive cable bridges that I'm sure they're more expensive than I'm thinking, but, but they look relatively inexpensive and they swing and they, they have liability there too. You know, it's not like, there's no liability, so. I, I just thought there might be some way to do it inexpensively also that maybe, maybe people have to walk the bridge, their bike over and it's not necessarily for a bike bridge.
Uh, what did you speak with Boscombe when you called?
I forget, there's, there's a select woman over there that is very, very active in.
What we're carrying.
Okay, in, in the project, that, so I'm not sure who that was, but, um, I, I spoke to someone else in the office, they were gonna pass the message on and I haven't heard.
Yeah, that, I think this may be, uh, Katie Phelps is the town administrator, and I mean, why she sent this to us. Um, it's just a letter, uh, it's an update that they sent out to their residents on, on that project there. They're spending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do upgrades to that area. You know, to the park and do a pavilion and things like that, so. What is that junction to? You, like.
It's literally right across the river.
I've never been down past the river, so.
Alright, if you go to the farm, it's dead ends and you can see the, well, just the bridge above it, is that where?
No, the apartments are still, they're still there, yeah.
Back when the, when the bridge was, was, uh, being taken down, the state historic and national historic preservation, uh, outfits are requiring the towns to put up some kind of historical marker. And if you go down at the end of Canterbury, there's a sign up there that talks and gives the history of the bridge. And then on the Boscombe side, that was part of their, their historical project was to develop this pavilion and put some signage and everything. And they're, they're getting to do that now, they finally raised the money.
I see.
Um, it wasn't, the requirement wasn't anything particular. They just said that the, the requirement was you had to put something there. So we got a sign made up and, and put it up down there and that met the requirements and they said, yeah, that's fine. Bridge was taken down and was closed in nineteen sixty-two to traffic, car traffic. So it wasn't taken down until two thousand fifteen. And, um, the bridge was, when they, when they took it down, they cut it in half, they pulled half it over Canterbury, half it over to Boscombe. And the company that did it had to weld in a whole bunch of supports so it didn't fall apart when they pulled it off. They bumped it because it was such bad shape. It was, uh, it backed up at the highway department, they have a bolt, I think it was like an inch or so at the base of the shank of the head. And where it actually went through the steel, it was about the size of a pencil. So there was nothing left of the, of the infrastructure. And I got pictures of it up at the town office when, when, when we were taking it down. The, the steel girders were Swiss cheese, you could look right through them.
So what would it, would it mean?
It, and, and that's what they had engineers look at to see, whole towns have been contributing money to a capital reserve account to determine whether they could either take it down or rehab it or whatever. And it just was no, no chance of rehabbing it at all, so.
What, you was that taken down again, funding?
Two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
Um, the Snowmobile Club wanted to know if they could try and rebuild it and put something there for the Snowmobile Trail. And that, they couldn't even use it for that, they, the engineers said, no, you have to take it down, let's see.
Yeah.
And I know, Luke, I, I, I understand, you know, Burlington to Vermont has a real nice rail trail they developed up there. You can go up and, and ride your bike or walk all the way up to, almost to the New York, where the ferry is to go to New York. Um, and it's, it is, it's really nice, um, so, um, I don't know what the, who you would have to talk to among getting a, a bridge across there.
But.
Obviously, the towns would have to get together.
Yeah.
Because half it's in Canterbury, half it's in Boscombe. I don't know what the state involvement would be.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, is if you read, um, the letter that, that came from, from Boscombe, I mean, this was a huge project, they had the. Well, the other thing is, is if you read, um, the letter that, that came from, from Boscombe, I mean, this was a huge project, they had a big committee, they did all this fundraising. It's no small amount of money, they did grants, they did, they have the, an engineering firm. And anything we did on our side is going across, would have to hook in with what they've already planned. And I think they've got a scenic overlook planned for the abutment that's coming out on their side, so, I mean, if it had to, if anything, we wanted to hook into that. You need to plan for that now, I would think, and they're, they're set to go, so I don't know how timing wise it would even work. But it would, it would have to, it would have to fit in with what they're already doing. I mean, if we started a, a committee, if we, if we started a committee now and started fundraising, I mean, we could be a couple of years from trying to get something done, I hope.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're like halfway to their goal.
They're starting building, uh, shortly, shortly.
Yeah, I think they're considerably more than halfway.
Oh, okay.
They're almost there.
Yeah.
They, they have, they have four hundred thousand dollars of the estimated four hundred fifty for the total project.
Yeah.
In the, in the list of.
Yeah.
I mean, at the second page, it gives the list of people that are on that committee, and Lori Carey is one of them. That might be a contact person you do to at least contact her, and I have her contact information if you need it.
Okay, I'm also, I, I know, um, John Porter too.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and just at least put the idea forth and see what they say.
Yeah.
If they say, well, we're all set.
You're, you're not hooking into our, our pavilion, but. I think that might be a good place to start, is talk to the committee that's already.
So on that end, nothing can be done on Canterbury's end?
Well, I mean, if, if there was money raised and the town said, yeah, let's go and do it, then Canterbury could do it, but we could only get halfway to the, to the middle of the river.
Oh, right, right, I was just wondering, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the, the problem, as always, is the cost.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
There was, uh.
So it's, it's stuff like this happened, like, from independent initiative, like, I, I of course can't front the project.
So there was a.
No.
In, in Concord, there was a, uh, bridge, a snow, the Snowmobile Pub, um, purchased a Bailey Bridge, which is an older military style, it surplus. And they put it across the Kootenai River for a snowmobile trail. I don't know, I don't know enough, you'd have to get an engineer involved and see what the span is and what, what you need for some kind of bridge, for a footbridge and, and everything.
Is Bailey Bridge the kind that's like floating on the water?
No, 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 it goes over the abutments. It's a steel bridge, basically, it's, it's self-supporting, I mean, they just push it across the river. And they had a company came in that does this all the time, they did it, but, but they were able to get it, it was a military surplus bridge, so.
I mean, it would be a, it, it's not that it's not a cool idea, I mean, I think it would be beautiful, unfortunately, it seems like the timing would have been, if we could have done it with Boscombe. At the same, at the same time, they're starting site work and construction, spring of twenty twenty-six, so they're all set to go. Uh, so they've got all their engineering done, but that doesn't mean, um.
I, I would pitch the idea to them and see what they say.
Yeah, so what I got on the Canterbury side, there's nothing to be done?
Well, I mean, it's just.
I think Boscombe would have to be receptive.
Yeah.
Because that might be in motion.
Yeah, the first step, I would think, is immediately bought.
Okay.
If, if they're not on board with this, then we can't.
Okay.
And, and I mean to say, there's nothing that can be done, it's just, one, who will do it, and two, where do you start get, getting money to do it?
Yeah. So they would have to receive, because they would have to receive the other half of the bridge.
Yeah. Well, would they have to build the other half of the bridge? Do they have to build from their side to the middle and we build to them, or do we build all the way and they just have to accept?
Just like the, the removal of the old bridge.
Yeah.
Was a, uh, combined effort by both towns, it was voted on by both towns. And it was voted, uh, voted on to start out a capital reserve account by both towns, then it was voted on to finally, where we had the funding to take it down. Myself, the town administrator at the time, Boscombe, worked together with the engineering firms and, uh, and then worked together with the company to, to take it down. So it was a combined effort.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be, my guess, it would be a combined effort similar to that and pull up something, yeah.
And at the moment, it seems like it's, you know, it seems, um, Canterbury would like more to go over to Boscombe, since they're building all that stuff there and hooking onto the rail trail. Then Boscombe would want to come over to Canterbury.
Well, the beach is quite, quite enough.
But the beach might by the, be the draw, and I think it'd be worth talking to them, because they might say, heck, yes, that's, that's a, that's really interesting unless.
Okay, so I'll start there.
Especially when taking into account Exit Eighteen's potential development, Exit Seventeen's development.
Yeah.
In the future, it could, it could link up and be, you know, an economic benefit to that area. I don't know where the, where rail trail goes north of Canterbury, I don't know if it connects to Franklin, Hilton, any of that, but it could potentially be the first step in opening up that whole corridor.
So the, the railroad, um, from, uh, Intermodal Road north, that is a snowmobile trail. When there's enough snow in the winter.
Okay.
The snowmobiles were allowed to use that railroad up to Tilden. I don't know if that's still, if they still do that or not. But at, at one time, a few years ago, that was a, a snowmobile trail. So on the Canterbury side, you could access that railroad, uh, track and drive up to Tilden on a snowmobile. But you could go south of there, like down into Concord.
And in the summer, is it passable enough for like a dirt bike?
Uh, no, it's a rare, there's, there's rails.
The rails.
There's rails, yeah, and, and they don't allow summer, because they, they used to run trains up through there. But, you know, I don't know what the status that is now.
Yeah. And I would think the other consideration would be parking on the Canterbury side.
Yeah.
A new project, they'll probably have to need handicapped accessible requirements, so, you know, those are all things to consider.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, uh, see what I can drum up on the Boscombe side.
Yeah, but it's an interesting project, it's a, it's a great idea.
So if they're receptive, then.
Okay, then let's talk.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Well, thanks for the time you've invested so far.
Can we eat this thing? Can we eat this thing?
Yes. Okay, take care.
See some of the beautiful bridges they built, you know, look at the, the spans across the canyons and things, I wouldn't walk over any of them, some of the ones in, in Europe or in Asia, but they're beautiful.
How wide is the river, a couple hundred feet?
Oh, it's.
Yeah, anyway, it's, yeah, it's.
All of that.
It might be warm. I can't remember what the total length of that span was when it was on. It was probably an area of two fifty.
Yeah.
Like football field.
I think it could be a really cool project.
Oh, yeah.
But cost wise and it's a lot of money, it'd be a commission.
Well, and if, as you say, parking, it would, all the parking would be right across from the new house that they just bought, that, that's right at the very butt end of the road. So that's the only place for parking.
Right.
And I don't even know what that does for, um, for the conservation needs, but that would all have to be figured out too.
Yes, it would, right.
Okay. Well, to be continued.
Yeah.
Cool idea as it is.
Yeah. All right, Ken, uh, you wanna go to land use, or say?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I think I sent you an email, the.
Yep.
Governor signed a hundred and something bills and vetoed a few more. The ones that we were more concerned with were the land use ones, uh, House Bill five seventy-seven. That, uh, says all ADUs, says we're going units attached or detached are allowed by right. There's no lot size restriction on detached, um, and you can't require conditional use or special exception for, uh, of detached or ADU.
And that's the one that just passed?
That just passed, and that was, the governor signed it on the fifteenth of the month, but it was retroactive to the first, so.
So the matter that's before the planning board right now?
So I sent, uh, that, I, I, uh, sent an email to NHMA Legal Inquiries and asked them, gave them details of that, said that, uh. We had an application, the planning board heard it, sent the applicant back, they wanted more information. Uh, I asked if that was a moot point at this time, they said, yes. Uh, I forwarded to the planning board chair, and he said, no. So, I, I don't, he said he was gonna try and take it up at the planning board meeting tomorrow night, I'm not sure when, I think they have a very cool agenda.
And then.
I guess, my concern is that, that the applicant is aware of the change in the law, that, from legal opinion, that they only need a building permit. They do not need anything else, they need to comply with state law as far as septic and, and that, but there's setbacks and those types of things, but. Uh, they do not need a conditional use permit, which is done by the planning board, so I'm not sure what the planning board has, they feel that they may want to look at.
But if the bill, if, if the bill says what it says and legal weighs in that it's not a problem, what power does our planning board have to say? We want to do something different?
I don't know. Just change, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, how do we find that out? I mean, who's, who's on first in that?
Well, the meeting's tomorrow night, and he said he was gonna bring it up.
All right.
So, I don't, I mean, Scott would be there as the second as well.
Should we invite the applicant?
Well, so, here's the issue, so tomorrow night, we're doing.
I know, the sidewalk and.
Sidewalk, followed by the public hearing, followed by another public hearing. And, and potentially followed by the solid waste.
Mm-hmm.
Along with, you know, whatever else comes up, including probably this discussion, so.
But, uh, you know, what point do we, I think, of a good application?
I guess, if, if the applicant came into the town office on Wednesday and said, I want a building permit, I'm not sure how everybody's going. I guess at this point, I would say, okay, from legal, here's your building permit application and fill it out. When the, we'll have the building inspector review it and do that, I don't know whether the staff at the town office has the authority to say, no, the planning board's gonna review it and get back to you.
Does that change the, does the town still have control of the size of ADUs?
Yes, well.
So for instance, how much town area?
The, well, it said. No, it has, it can't, it can't, right, it can't be anything, uh, less than a thousand square feet. That is in the law also, okay?
Oh, okay.
But it doesn't say, it does say that the town has the authority to, like, setbacks and septic and those types of things. But, but it doesn't say, you know.
I'm just curious, if it just opened the door for bigger ADUs, more of them by rep, you know?
I would say more of them, yes, um, or at least just.
Easier.
I guess. I, I don't know, more of them, it, it's less control over how many there are or, or what, what they have.
But wasn't there a bill saying you could have an attached and detached two-on-one property?
Yes, that they can go through.
Okay. Just curious if that had gone through, would it, because you still got a thousand feet on and a thousand feet off, that would triple the size of houses.
Did, um, when it says, um, wait, excuse me, my question just fell out of my head, continue. I'll, I'll gather my thoughts.
Well, I, I guess tomorrow night, I'll certainly bring up, I, I, I would ask that, then, then you bring us up to them. I know it's gonna be a long meeting and I don't know how you're gonna get, how, how this is gonna get discussed.
Yeah.
But I would ask if there's any way possible to get taken care of.
Yeah.
As soon as possible, so if the applicant becomes aware of this, they come in or anybody else comes in, that the staff at the town office has the direction to go, you know?
Well, it would seem that, you know, as, as since your, um, agenda has discretion, like any of them does, you know, move this, which should be a pretty short discussion.
I would think it would be.
And any things like the, the, um, the review of chapter nine is something that, since it's not critical when it happens, and is going to be long, could, could.
Well, in the agenda that got set out, it, it was something in there, if it's before nine o'clock, um, we can discuss the solid waste chapter. If it's after nine, then we'll just put it off.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's sensible. There were a couple more that, that could be a concern to us, um, SP two eighty-four, um, that you can only require one parking area per unit. So.
Really?
If, if.
Area or spot?
Spot.
Because if you have a parking area, you could.
One parking spot per unit.
Huh.
Yes, you can't require more than one parking spot per unit. Um, there was one that, that was, there was an turnover, but it really doesn't apply to us. Uh, HV six thirty-one allows multifamily or mixed use by right in commercial zones, um, but that only applies to urban areas. So that does not apply to Canterbury. NHMA sent out, uh, a House Bill or.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever on the revised laws, so that is, uh, I think it's a good document.
Yeah.
I think they sent it out to everyone, I think I got it twice, actually.
Is there an established percentage of residential in a, so it's a commercial zone? Today's, in your land mixed use, do they say only fifty percent can be residential, I know it doesn't apply to us, but.
I, I read, it just said, when it said urban areas, I stopped reading.
Okay.
Sorry.
I would just be curious to see how they, how they deal with that.
I don't know, I don't know. All right, so you'll try and get the planning board.
Yeah.
The planning board.
Yeah.
Do you want to talk about, uh, Senate bill and the email that Cal drafted?
Yep, nice. Yeah.
And I know Cal, he says, not what you're expecting, but.
If you, if you just emailed it to us, we can, we can, we can all read it, or you can just read it to us.
Uh, how would I, how would I forward it to everybody here? Cause it was very tailored to you and myself.
Yeah.
So, all right, I just forwarded it, so you should all have.
Oh.
Go on.
Reports.
So I could change some of the examples, if you want to, Eric?
Yeah, exactly, I'm just thinking, like.
Yeah.
Town meeting where each of us, you know, typically speaks on a, a particular warner.
That's a very good point right there.
Yeah.
Very good point.
I think we have to stop it.
You would.
Yeah.
Well, to be safe.
Yeah.
You could still do it, but somebody might cry foul, right?
But is it a, to explain the context of?
That is the, 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 the law is vague enough that it does not, um, allow, well, electioneering and would be in the, the judge. If, if somebody brought Boscombe, it would be up to the court to determine whether that was permanent or not.
Tell me, if I was to, I mean, how would you ever have a, a reasonable public discourse about anything?
That's the question, that's the question.
Well, and, and if I remember though, it is a misdemeanor.
It is a misdemeanor.
Yes.
Yeah, so you could actually, you have a criminal record.
Right, it's just a violation, it's a misdemeanor.
Okay, so, um, yes, let's sign this, please, and, um, I mean, would, you could send this one by, uh, from you personally as well.
I already sent.
Oh, you already sent. Oh, you already sent it? Okay. Okay.
So we could, we could edit this. I'm just thinking in the, in the essence of time.
Yeah.
We could edit it and you could.
If we vote now tonight that we are going to sign this and just come in and see the edited version and.
I think that's what you would have to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'd have to come in individually and review it and determine whether you're in agreement of it. And if there's edits to be made or anything like that, then we would have to meet again. But if you're all okay with it individually, as written, then, as long as no edits, then we could, we could probably.
I mean, I'm perfectly okay with this as written and if it's, if the language is just changed.
We could make it generic with the board's.
Of the board. I'm perfectly okay with that.
And that last paragraph?
What was the last paragraph?
The last bullet point?
Oh, wait, is it there? Yeah, that was, I don't know how much time came to that.
Oh, I didn't read that far. Thank you, Calvin.
It was a great paragraph.
Yes, it is great. Um, maybe, maybe not. Maybe not from us.
Right.
But from you, absolutely. So maybe remove the last bullet point.
Yep.
And then change the rest of the language to be the collective select board.
Yeah.
I can change the two examples I did of the more articles I spoke to to just being, every single year you explain every single warner article and you wouldn't be able to do that.
Exactly.
So, um, yeah. Our goal was to have informed.
Put that bulletproof. I don't know who squats in us.
Oh, I think it was one of ours. One of our reps.
Uh, was it? Yes.
It was SB two thirteen?
Yeah, SB two thirteen.
I think I saw, or I might be wrong.
Sponsor Senator James Gray, Republican.
Yeah, it was a Senate bill.
Oh, okay, so we've done that.
Yeah, that's our just one sponsor.
Did anything happen with House thirty four? That was the essentially revamping of all the zoning, changing frontages allowed. Essentially changed.
Dead.
It did. Gets, okay, good.
Yep.
Yeah, I just looked at the ones that NHMA put out that affect way of use. I didn't go back and review.
Because that was the big one that the whole state.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Cal. This is a well-written letter and thanks for bringing this to our attention because, yeah, that would make things ridiculously hard if you can't explain to your voting public why.
Well, of course, they owe this on everybody to do all the legwork to inform themselves.
Which would happen.
No, I mean, it's very difficult to get enough information as it is when you're putting out what we can put out.
Yeah.
But I guess the other, the other thing to consider is would the candidates not become dead? You know, could you, could you be asked to give your opinion about a whatever town project and give it and then be accused of electioneering?
If you're sitting, if you're already sitting, running for reelection. That would be good.
Things to consider, I know.
So I'll make those minutes tomorrow morning and text you when it's ready for signing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cal.
Alright. Town hall electrical?
Yeah, I went with the electrician last week. I, I let you guys know.
Yeah.
He's gonna put in two twenty amp circuits with outlets on the outside of the building. He also went at, we had a request from the historical society to potentially put a line in power to the housing museum instead of having an electrical meter on the side of the building. He looked at that and gave you an estimate for that. Hopefully that'll win the historical. So I think that's it for the town hall.
What was the, and how would be the cost for putting the circuits outside? Well, oh.
Let me check. Let me just check. I think it was like nine thousand dollars.
What? Really?
It's a.
Kind of looks beautiful.
Six thousand. Six thousand go from the town hall to the, to the housing museum. It's, it's.
Oh, okay, that's.
It's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-five feet or something like that. So we're gonna have to buy con, quite, the cost, the cost is a material. So you have to buy conduit and wire and looking at probably a fifty amp circuit. So it's gonna be a pretty heavy duty.
Two hundred.
Is it worth it just to get the meter off the side of the building?
Well, I have to look.
What's the payback?
That's the thing. We'd have to look at and see what the payback is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's, that's, you know, we get, I don't know, sixty bucks a month or fifty bucks a month for that building. So we'd have to look at and see what the payback is.
We pay sixty bucks a month for that building?
Yeah. I think that's what it is. I have to look at the.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be worth it.
Get that information sent out.
How much was it to put the two sockets on the outside of the town hall?
He didn't say. I just said.
Oh, okay.
I said.
When you said nine thousand, I was like, it can't be that much to put two sockets.
No, 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 no. I just said, do that.
Okay, thank you. The Palmer's Market appreciates that. That will be much helpful in this, the fair, it will be very helpful for having people going down the system and stuff.
Town Halloween.
Town Halloween.
Right.
Yeah, great.
Clearly was a, a great idea.
Okay.
Alright.
Yay.
Janitor vacancy.
Yep, let you know, Robin Preve, a longtime janitor for the town buildings, had to get done because of the health issue. I got a letter from her today and this is addressed to everybody and says, I want to thank all of our town employees and departments for always treating me so well over the years. This includes all of our select people and various board members. Feels good to know I leave my employment with a good feeling in my soul. I leave this job by no other reason than I am just not able to continue due to my health. I wish you all good things. I remember my years fondly. Thank you for all, thank you all for being the kind and wonderful people you are.
Thank you.
So, can we send Robin a letter?
I will. I figured I would be. Yep.
Can we, can we print it out and sign it?
Of course.
Thank you. Because that would be pretty and nice. And you would appreciate that, I think.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Alright, anything else before we go on to old business?
I do have some other new business. I am gonna attend a job fair at unemployment, or Employment Security. They. This is about the highway department vacancy we have. They have job fairs every Thursday. So I'm gonna go there this week from nine eleven and hand out flyers in my card. And hopefully we'll get somebody that might rail the workforce.
For a highway?
For a highway, yeah.
Can we hand out ones for a janitor too? Or is it just highway?
Uh, this is just highway.
Okay.
I didn't do anything. I figured I'd do one at a time.
Yeah.
And I'll let people know, if people talk to me, I'll talk to them about the potential proposition at the transfer station in January. Because Andrea has made it clear that he, he feels he's gonna be done by the end of the year.
Okay.
But I would make a pitch for that too.
Do we have stock gap for the custodial services right now?
No. Well, yes. The staff, the staff at the building up at the missile building, town office taking care of it and will monitor the story in the town hall.
Could we reach out to any of the local clean, there's a ton of cleaning companies that solicit on the Facebook page.
Yeah, I mean, our, our office building, the missile building, I think we're good on. I already have two applications. So we posted it and I have two applications.
Okay, good.
So I, I don't think, I think the biggest thing would be make sure after the fair that this building and the town hall are squared away. And, uh, you know, we'll, the staff will take care of that.
Is this building used anymore during the fair? It used to have the book sale on it, but is it just open for bathrooms? We don't have the book sale anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess we don't use it anymore. So, yeah, so it would just be the town hall.
Town hall.
And I think I'll talk to Rachel after the book. If the thing is done, we'll, we'll over there and take a walk through and make sure that everything's all taken care of. Usually there's a problem, but, but just to make sure. Let's see, I think that's it.
Can we, can we back up for half a second just while we're on the town hall and it's, and the fair? Are the bathrooms open? Do they keep that back hall closed during the fair? Is it only available for the book sale people? Or are the crowds using those bathrooms? Because that would be a huge. What's our.
Yeah, I don't think they close them all.
Uh, it seems like we should because we have all the porta potties and there's ones right outside. And if, it just seems like it would be one, a big bump to the septic and to the cleaning of the building if that back hallway is open.
I don't think you can restrict it though, because that's a fire exit.
Well, you can close the door and just put a sign on, say, fire exit only.
On the bathroom, yeah.
No, on the door, the door on the wall.
You could, you could.
Close that back hallway.
You could put a sign on the door, staff only at fair.
Just on the bathroom door?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Couldn't you lock it from the inside? I think that's the bill push button.
Oh.
Yeah.
But then how do you get back in?
I think you just put.
Just do your resume.
I think you just add a sign on.
I'm not sure I even thought about it.
Publicly used porta potties, septic system can't.
Okay.
You know, something like that. We'll make up something.
Okay.
I don't know if I've ever known this one.
I didn't, I didn't either. I only just thought about it now.
Yeah.
With, especially with septic pumps failing and, and lack of janitors.
Yeah. The only other new business I have, and I should have brought this up when John was here, the classics road inspection is in your folder.
Oh, okay.
There's one road that he has. There's some, some things that need attention here. One road, flag road. Says passable, need zoo, crush bank, gravel, added rocks. We do not have a road improvement plan signed for that. We only have a waiver. So we can't hold them responsible for that.
Okay. Which road again?
Flag road.
Yep.
There's one house on it.
Yeah.
And then on Welch Road, says the plow truck is parked in the turnaround. And the turnaround was, we, we, when we went, when they put the, extended that and put the housing down there, we asked for an easement for, for a turnaround. So the fire trucks could, could turn around there. And, and John noted this is a fall one, that the plow truck was parked there. So I'm gonna send a letter and ask them to, to not leave the truck turned around there. Parked there so they could, the fire trucks could turn around if they had to.
Yeah.
So what do we do with the roads such as flag roads in this case?
There's nothing we can do about flag road.
And the owner themselves are responsible? The person who's on their one house? What?
Again, it's, it's, we don't have a road proof plan, uh, signed by them when we did the waiver. That was before we did the waiver and the road proof plan.
Yeah.
They just sign waivers. So, um, there's nothing we can, we can't enforce them to, to maintain that rule.
And if they don't care, if they're driving over a lazy road, they, they need to be real safety to get in there.
And if a fire truck can't make it down here or whatever, then that's the way it is.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the, that's what the waiver is for. It resolves the liability.
Okay. I'd be happy about that if there's a fire though.
Well, I mean, the truck's gonna be able to get there quick enough anyways.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not familiar with flag roads. Where is flag road?
Uh, you have to go through Loudon.
Oh. Oh, I do know where flag road is.
Yeah, so Loudon is a lot. Loudon would be the, probably, if there was a call for a fire or something, Loudon would probably respond, but.
Alright.
There's Soapstone Road. Dean Road. Pardon me? It says Dean Soapstone Road. Yeah, where's that?
Off of Wilson Road. Off Wilson Road.
Oh, where it goes to the left.
Yeah.
Uh, that goes to the left.
Yeah. There's two, two houses up there.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't realize that was a different road.
Oh, yeah?
It was down there once.
Yeah. And what's, um, I may be so old, what's Quipac? On H Road?
Coryback.
Yeah, Ledgeback.
Coryback or Ledgeback.
Alright.
Do a hard road to travel against.
Exactly. Alright, so old business?
Yep.
It looks like we've already talked about old children.
Yep.
So that's at Shell Meeting House set. So that places to retire rehealth care.
Right. And Cal said that we'd email with the costs.
Yep.
And again, this is for six months. We have a meeting scheduled with the budget committee in September. We'll explain to them what happened with our healthcare this year, what we tried to do for options and what we explored. And, um, I mean, usually we would say, does anybody have any thoughts or guidance or anything? And then, uh, I'll start contacting, uh, health insurance carriers, pools and ask them to look into, uh, costs for two thousand twenty-six. And we'll go through the process like we went through, um, last year. Then in May, when we found out the age groupism. So we will start that process in September. This is, this is the cost through the end of the year. You can see what.
Right.
We have two, two where will be an additional cost to the town.
Right.
But just for this six month period?
Just for this six month period.
So. And I guess, do we have the money somewhere if we choose to?
Cal sent the budget.
Yep.
To you guys. I, you know, looked at it quick. We're actually doing pretty good.
Yep.
We, when we talked last meeting, we talked about some overages. But overall, we're in pretty good shape because of the apparently few vacancies. So that helps us out at the bottom line. So I, I think, you know, at this point, can we talk to the thirty-seven hundred dollars? Because that's approximately what the cost.
Yep.
It was like. I don't think of that. I mean, as we get closer to the end of the year, we can talk to the budget directors and say, if you have money, don't spend it. Those, those types of things, yeah.
What do you mean? Assuming you looked at, at what Cal sent out.
I did.
Yeah.
That's such a thorny issue.
I think, I think the morally right thing to do is to help them out.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, obviously we didn't, we didn't choose to do this to the employees or retirees. But I think the right thing to do is to honor it and, and to help them the best we can. At least get through the year and to work and negotiate. I mean, if we have the money, I think that's the right thing to do. But at the same time.
Well, we're scraping for every five hundred bucks in the budget. It's tough.
It's tough.
But these are our people and that's what we do.
You don't want to leave someone high and dry. I'm sure most of these people need the healthcare. You know, it's, it's.
And it's two at the moment, not?
Correct. Two, not three.
Two, not three. I would lean towards the yes, but when we bring it up, when it comes up in the budgeting process, um, about where other places we might find money to fund things like this, I think we're going to have to talk a lot about our investment policy. Because we could have been making that money in other places if things had been invested. So I think that's going to be a big conversation come September. It's big on my list anyway, because then this would not have been, I couldn't have done this without, without a second thought.
Yep, I, I get you.
So.
Alright. Do we need to make this in the form of a motion or, or do you make?
I don't think so. Okay, this is a, this is a.
Budget.
Yeah, this is a budget item and, yeah.
So I guess as, as.
So I guess as, as, um, how do we wanna, how do we wanna put the letter so that it's understood that this is, you know, circumstances that were beyond our control?
Sure.
And, and we want to do the right thing for our longtime employees. But, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I certainly will, I, I responded to the email that we got and, you know, explained that this was beyond the town's control.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, that, that, uh, it was a hardship and, and rebuilding it the best we can.
Yeah.
But we do have a limited amount of funds, so, and I will make that clear when we send, send the emails out.
Tell them.
That, that sounds right, yes.
There is it.
But I mean, it, it just, you know, thinking back to the conversation from Chief Crowdy, uh, you know, about keeping, attracting people and retaining them, you know, taking care of your people should make this town so attractive.
I agree.
Which I think perhaps other towns may pay the money, you know, for jobs well done, but, you know, how much do they take care of people afterwards? I don't know, but, you know, that's what makes this town attractive, I would hope. So you agree to pay it, right? Yes.
That is correct.
Yeah. We digress.
We're sort of talking.
But yes, sometimes emotion is nice, just directly. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Kevin will make a motion. He doesn't.
You're putting me on the spot. Cal is clear, it's all good. All right, uh, 367 Shaker Road update.
Yeah, I sent the email to, uh, they're changing their policy.
Which I think is what the news.
Yes.
So hopefully that will take care of some of the issues that we had earlier.
I think that's, that's, shows the importance of maintaining good relations.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I've been there, though. All right, uh, Buell Fellowship?
Yeah, I have a file here, sent you an email.
Yeah.
Mandy's opinion as long, as well as the Building Inspector's letter that he sent. So you guys have to decide tonight, uh, whether you're gonna exempt the property or not, or, or how you see.
Yeah.
So, um, I did not ask Mr. Davis to come in tonight.
No.
I thought it would be better if you guys talked about it, made a determination, and then if he wants to appeal that, then you can appeal it.
Yeah.
So certainly.
If that's, if you choose not to.
Right, right.
If you choose to exempt it.
From what I've read and my own observations, I, I think that we should not exempt the property.
I agree.
I just see no, no evidence that it's being used for religious purposes. I don't think it's being used, period.
I, I really rely on, um, Mandy's and Joel's assessment of the property. And I really like the phrase "absence of qualifying use,"
Yeah.
uh, which I think they made very clear. And I don't think I realized how, um, bad the buildings were and unusable and, um, yeah, I would agree.
Any further discussion?
So there, this would be a motion.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we, how should I phrase that? That we do not exempt.
Deny the exemption.
So I'll make a motion that we deny the exemption for Buell Fellowship.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Sam Lake House Garage update.
Yep, um, the construction will start with the removal of the chingles and siding, uh, next week.
Perfect.
Weather permitting.
Yeah.
Um, they assess, test the lead and see if they have. And, uh, I talked to John and, um, the demolition debris will go to our transfer station. So, um, so that will start, uh, after the fair.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
There is some, a few things, once the fair moves everything out of there, there are a few things in town homes. I don't know if anybody is looking for a couple of old, big, heavy steelcase desks.
What a sign at the Wattenau.
I think they're built in the 40s.
What a sign at the Wattenau with the little picture, somebody will pay $10 for it.
Yeah, you've got to take a look there. Uh, the only other thing that's in there that I, I'm not sure what to do with is, there was an old baling machine in there that was used, you could use it to bail paper or hay, anything like that. It was a hand-operated, it's, um, it was donated to the town many, many years ago. I don't know who donated it to town, it was there, it's been there for a long time. We moved it up to the highway garage when they put the foundation in. I don't know what to do with it, Historical Society doesn't have any room for it.
Yeah, how about the ag go?
I, oh, maybe I could contact them and see if it's on, yeah.
Bring it, just wait, just haul it down, slide it in between all the demonstrators at the fair, and some people just kind of say, oh, I forgot I brought this with me.
Bad idea.
An old baling machine, new thing.
How interesting, but.
It is very interesting, um.
I've never heard of something.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there an ag museum in the state of New Hampshire?
I don't know.
I'll bet there is, some.
I mean, there's the Dover Museum that's got all kinds of crazy, the, did you hear the thing on NPR the other day about the museum up in, uh, in Dover? Woodman Museum? It has a, like a taxidermy polar bear and all this crazy stuff, but it might just be Dover.
Right.
I will check with, uh, the ag commissioner.
Yeah. Thank you. Mark, like, my time capsule, there we go.
Yeah, put it in.
Perfect. I'll send.
All right, uh, that brings us.
And he's thought, I'm, I'm sorry, and Mr. Valenius is fine, he had a.
Pardon me?
And who's doing the work on the, um?
River liar.
Oh, oh, okay, go on. Wrong question.
Words.
Shaker Heights is the name of the company.
That's right, okay.
All right, last item on the agenda is all board meeting update.
Yep, um, so I sent out a quick, uh, email to everybody with the date. I've gotten quite a few responses, uh, haven't heard the trustees, trust fund, the energy committee. And I think the chairman of the ZBA was in a way agreeing, but I think I don't know. Everybody else is.
Not the energy committee?
Energy committee.
I'll send, I'll blast them off to.
And I guess from my standpoint, um, if we're hosting this, and I think we are, what do we want to cover? You know, we don't have to decide tonight, obviously, but just think about that.
Well, we should put in ideas for agenda, if nothing else, if people have that in hand before you.
So I think, did I, I think I included you guys on the email that I sent out, the invitation, did I?
I think so.
It was, it was to discuss the code of conduct.
Yep.
And any other person's, I think it was the way I worded it.
Going for the sheets on the wall is pretty much what we're gonna be doing.
And the note that I was going to bring up to Cal earlier was, um, it came, uh, I started to think about, um, boards and how they work. And then we signed appointment slips the other day for several people new to the ZBA, but, and I happen to know one of them, but I don't really know the other one. And I realized we're signing appointment slips without, we're assuming that they are coming with a recommendation of the board, but we don't know what that recommendation is. And I for one thinks it, it would be nice, it would be a good idea if one appointment slip comes through, that the board itself, who's putting this person forward, says, this is why we think this person would be good. And, you know, some, you know, it's not a true vetting process, but at least have some idea, as opposed to just saying, oh, yeah, they think they're great, but, but why? Is that too complicated or?
Well, I think we might open ourselves up, you know, what if, what if it's someone that not everybody loves and doors? But they're gonna be a good ZBA candidate.
Well, that would be fine, if that's what they, if, if the committee itself can say, this is why we think this person would be good. If I personally don't open the door, then that doesn't matter. It shouldn't matter, and it wouldn't to me, but I would, I would want to know why the board that we're signing this person up for thinks that this is a good fit. If it's too complicated, uh.
I was gonna say, ZBA historically, when I sat on it, if somebody was an alternate or whatever, it would be brought up to the board. We'd discuss the person, pros, cons, their experience, et cetera. And if we all agreed that they'd be a good match, then we could push it to the select board.
But then the select board never hears any of that discussion.
But, but maybe.
Well, it was in the minutes, like for the ZBA month, they invited both people there, interviewed them during the meeting, and should be in there. And recorded that you can see the interview.
Regular chair could just slip an note, hey, we'd like, these people think it'd be an asset, kind of thing.
Well, you know, that would be fine, if, if we gotta, if, if ahead of time, we knew we were signing appointment slips and they did, if we just knew, okay, see discussion, ZBA meeting of January 12th or whatever, then I would be happy to go look at it and just see their finer points without bringing it up at one of, one of our meetings. But I, I never even, I guess I just never really thought about it. Actually, until I was saying to Ken, until I went to that training over at Jaffrey, where they did talk about vetting, um, people on their committees for certain reasons. So.
Well, and as we've seen, we're not always on the first one, see?
No, it is not, but I think it's better than not, and just, maybe I'm just nosy, but I like to know, I like to know what I'm signing and why I'm signing it. So. So then, um, because usually they contact me to say, hey, can we look at this on the select board agenda? So I can just, when I send it to you guys, say, here's the minutes, so I don't think it's good on that meeting. Okay, you don't, you don't even need to look up the business, say, check back. I mean, you have to go through and find the minutes and copy.
You make them tell me, right?
Yes, yeah.
It was at this meeting that they discussed it.
Yeah, and then I'll go back and look. Okay, that would, that would be, that would be fine, thank you. I just, I, I try to be hesitant about signing things that I really know you when I'm signing, even if I know the name.
All right, any other business?
Yes, uh, I got an email or I got a message from the electrician. He sent me the estimate for what he felt would be needed for the transfer station if we went three phase up there.
Yep.
Between $18,000 and $19,000. And that would, uh, give us three phase, have to be a new panel, new entrance. That would, uh, put three phase to the existing baler and three phase to a compactor.
Yep.
For the other.
So it would be 200 and.
It was 217, I think.
I think you're right.
So plus another 18 to 19, which again are, that's the, that's the market rate now.
Right.
So we don't know what equipment cost would be if we decided to do it in a year or two to three year.
Right.
But, but I sent that to George Holt at Aries, so he could have that, he'd be smiling, thank you. So he will be getting back to us.
But that's still less than the numbers that were floating around, wasn't people just saying like 350,000 or, I, I mean, the numbers that were floated about three phase seemed a lot more than 217.
Didn't that include, didn't that include the new compactor though, or no?
No, that's not the cost of the compactor. I can't remember what the cost of the compactor was, I have, we, they.
I think the one I was hoping was for $60,000.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, um, and, but then you'd have associated costs with the truck. Probably a couple of, an extra, extra, uh, container, you know, right? Those, those types of things you'd have to account also.
Right.
But I think that's what George is gonna, is gonna provide.
Yeah, and just puts us in the, much more in the ballpark, I think, than we were.
Yeah, I mean, if you start looking at the cost of three phase, the cost of a new compactor, um, a, a truck to haul it, and then, you know, we talked about maybe some kind of office trailer or something like that, I would imagine you're gonna be in the half a million dollar range.
Yep.
Those are my thoughts.
Which is, I was talking.
I was saying, do we ever maybe reach out to the school? Because they, they were talking about the, the power upgrade at the school, maybe we piggyback on each other and try to save some money.
Yeah, so I talked to the, I did not talk to the school, but I talked to the unito rep, and he missed the meeting. He was supposed to be at the school, so.
Thank you.
So I can contact the school and ask them what, what happened, but I don't know if they did anything because he wasn't there, so I, I don't know.
And I, I can check in on the new school meeting, the first.
Okay, yeah, you want, you want to ask them about that?
All right, all right.
Yeah, that might help, because that would. It may reduce the cost of the three phase to the, to what?
Fee.
Yeah, 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 a couple of poles.
Yeah.
Well, that adds up.
Might get down to $200,000.
Well, I mean, that might be your cost for the three phase to the facility.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and that just, it's still less than a whole new transfer station if that's what this takes care of. So, and, and, and that's yet to be, um, seen, so I think this is an important part. And excuse, I have to ask this, and it's the dumbest question around, what does it mean a new entrance? I, I keep straying over that.
Where the, where the power comes into the building.
Yeah.
The, anything from the, um, weatherhead, which is the pipe that goes up to the top of the building where the wire goes in.
Yeah.
From the weatherhead down is the town's responsibility. So we have to buy a new meter socket and where that, where that meters on the side of the building, that meter socket.
Oh, so where the power actually physically enters.
With the wire, when the wire comes into the building.
Okay.
That whole section has to be, is town, they'll supply it to what they call a weatherhead, which is where, where it comes to the, to the side of the building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pivoting a little bit with the all, the all boards meeting, I had HTC last week, and they have a new secretary. So the conversation came up to potentially have all the land use secretaries get together and sit down and divvy out roles and make sure everybody knows what their tasks are and who's to do what. Cheryl was the new secretary, and she was very open to that, because she's obviously in the learning curve and wants to do the job the way that they want.
Andrew.
I was like, last name is?
Andrew? Cheryl Andrew, she, um, earlier in the year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Got the ad for, um.
Probably, that's right, probably, yeah.
She answered the ad and was willing to do, to be a fill-in for me. And then we asked her to do the HTC, hopefully the dedicated HTC secretary, and she agreed.
True.
So last name was her first real start into it, she was a family couple. So Michelle and I have been working with her to get her all set up and trained, and she's working with Michelle on the process. So, um, were there specific things they wanted?
I think, I think it was mostly coming from Kevin as to who notices, sort of the same things we've been dealing with in terms of notices, agendas, who points what out, when they're supposed to put it out. And if you guys are addressing it.
We are.
There's an issue then, I just wanted to bring it up because of the product.
Yeah, Michelle and Cheryl are working on that, so, um, for Cheryl, we're trying to do a purely like recording secretary versus land use administrator thing. This is kind of the first opportunity we've had to really try that from the beginning, so, um, Cheryl is just gonna be at the meetings, doing the minutes, sending up the minutes, and all the agendas and organization and applications.
Yeah. Sounds good. All right, uh, anything further, we need you adjourned to a non-public.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Anything else public?
Uh, not many, thank you.
Okay, so.
Oh, wait, a lot, um, one, just a quick thing, um, do we have any, um, uh, municipal records community things scheduled anytime in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. The last two weeks have been a word that I'm not willing to say. Okay, no, I know, I just wanted. So I might have time, but I'm not willing.
Leave it, leave it there.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, I just didn't know.
Anything further, and you'll regret it, so.
Yeah, it's just looking like towards October, if I'll, I might start figuring in October. No, it's not, it's, have you seen, you don't see October?
Oh. All right, so, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn to a non-public session per RSA 91-8:3, Roman numeral 2A. Looking for a second.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right?